I'd like to make note that all council members are in attendance today. From layerless, moved into the reading of the closed session. On May 31st, 2023 at 7:33 PM, a closed session was held at City Hall. The motion was made by Councilmember Foster with a second from Councilmember Tillman. The, every council member voted in favor of it. In accordance to the Maryland Open Meetings Act Title 10, Governmental Procedures, Procedure, Subtitle 5, Meeting Section 3-305B, this meeting was closed in order to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, and to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. The topics discussed were legal presentation regarding the roles and responsibilities, a motion made by Foster at 8:51 PM with a second by Chaney to excuse the city manager and city clerk, and discussion regarding personnel matters. Persons present at the closed session were all of the above noted, as well as Mayor Miller, Attorney Gallow, city manager, Whitebreak, and Clerk Coleman. Clerk Coleman works, the city manager, Whitebreak, and Clerk Coleman were excused at 8:51 PM. Actions taken at the closed session, the Maryland council members decided by consensus for Director Gallow to coordinate all matters regarding a personnel issue. Motion to adjourn was made at 9:55 PM by Tillman with a second by Chaney, carried 5-0. Does that satisfy the needs of the closed session report?
Yes, it does.
Sounds good. We are then off to review of the minutes for the meeting, for the workshop on May 3rd, 2023, and the council meeting on May 8th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to approve both of those meetings.
Mr. Mayor, that will be on Monday night.
Oh, my bad, my bad.
If there's any revisions or...
Does anybody have any revisions or concerns on it?
No.
Next, I am looking for, do we have any council members? I'd like to clear a potential conflict of interest regarding any items on our agenda today.
No, sir.
Hearing none, we'll proceed forward. We will now open the floor to public comment on non-agenda items. This is for public comment on any items that are not part of the agenda today. Seeing that we don't have any public comment on those items, I will then move forward to resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. First, we have the introduction of ordinance 05-22023, community village revisions, which pertains to revisions in our community village. This is just initial review, correct?
Correct. We've been talking about this for quite some time. Specifically, the big items that we've talked about have been offering relief from the requirement for alleys to serve all the homes. And we had consensus several months ago to consider removing that requirement for single-family dwellings, but maintaining it for townhomes, but also requiring a higher percentage of open space be left in the project in order not to have the developer do the alleys. So those are some of the big items in there. In your packet following my report is a tracked changes version of the whole community village section, so you can kind of zoom in on the highlighted areas and the red text in that if you want to see exactly what changed. The ordinance itself already has the changes accepted, and it just picks up where the changes start. So we gave you both of those in the packet just for clarity, so you can see what all changed within the overlay district. And happy to entertain any questions or comments. One other thing that we did include in there, there was discussion several months ago about the prohibition of special home occupation businesses in community villages. And the consensus at that time seemed to be to remove that restriction. But we do have a new council now, so if there are other opinions on that, you know, certainly now's the time to consider that.
Were we considering making that change retroactive to include Meads Crossing?
Well, it would, it would be any, yes, it would, it would apply to any, any community village in the city regardless of when it was built.
Okay. And maintaining the restriction would depend on, on a case-by-case basis about available parking, impact to neighbors, and things like that?
Well, that would be part of, so it still would be a special exception, so it would go before the Board of Appeals.
Right.
So at that point, that's where they would speak to whether there were concerns about parking or proximity to neighbors, things of that nature.
Okay.
With the way community village is drafted now, individuals don't have that opportunity to go to the Board of Appeals. They just can't do a home occupation special. So that would be anything where you have customers or patrons coming to your home.
Okay. Any other council members have any comments or concerns with it?
And we do have a month to, to look this over. It will go before the Planning Commission at their next meeting for their input and recommendation. Then we'll hold a public hearing on it next month at the workshop, and it potentially could be passed then the following Monday next month. So we have some time to massage it if we, you know, hear any comments or want to tweak it a little bit.
One of the other things that was discussed, that I discussed with Darrell, and I think you were in that conversation also, was the potential for some light commercial development as part of a community village. Are we still, is that still a consideration? Do we still want to maybe talk about that at planning and see where we want to go forward with that?
So, community village doesn't exclude commercial uses, but it does require the underlying zoning to incorporate commercial. So...
So that's a requirement change to our zoning code? Is that, I mean...
So, right, so that would be, yes, if we wanted to allow commercial uses within a residential district, say, so it would apply to a property that was completely R-10,000. We would need to amend the zoning text for that district to allow the commercial uses in there. But if we were to do that, it would allow it for anywhere in our 10,000. So perhaps doing something within...
It would need to be massaged, so that would only include where, where community village would be applicable.
Right now, it doesn't prohibit commercial uses, but it does require the underlying zoning to be there for commercial.
Right. So it de facto prohibits it because our underlying zoning does not allow it. So unless we make the change to those three codes that allow community village, then...
And, right.
But that code could be linked to the language allowing it in the community village.
It could be, yes.
Okay.
And of the large parcels that are undeveloped within the city that are primarily residentially zoned, two of the three have commercial zoning on part of the property. The third being the Sewell property that was recently annexed is completely residential.
Okay.
One other thing that is a fairly substantial change is that recognizing that three of the largest undeveloped properties in the city have some piece of major infrastructure planned to go through them. The Sewell farm has Worthington Boulevard, Mountain Brook Farms has the bypass, the Hoffman property has key crossing road planned to go across it. Recognizing that, we felt like the larger properties could get a little more flexibility as far as the housing mix. So rather than, say, the percentage of, of actual dwellings, we thought that a percentage of land use would be a good way to apply that. So the larger properties, we made it over, I think...
Over 150 acres?
Yeah, over 150 acres. Could not exceed more than 40% of the land area for attached dwellings, rather than the actual ratio of dwellings. We switched that to land, land use areas. So we thought that would give them a little bit more flexibility, that maybe the density could be picked up, that would help pay for those pieces of infrastructure. So what we're seeing is that, just, just in today's economics of developing, that a developer is going to need a higher density to be able to pay for construction of a major street that's not going to really serve that community.
Yes.
And we thought that that, that flexibility would help ensure that we could get those pieces of infrastructure. So that is something that we hadn't really discussed before, and working through that with, with planning and zoning, and we got some feedback from, from some builders as well, and came up with that, that land area piece to factor in.
Does council have any additional comments or concerns for community village revisions? Hearing none, we'll proceed forward to adoption, Resolution 2023-08, water allocation for June. Any questions, comments, or concerns on that? Hearing none, I'm going to go straight into the city manager report.
So under capital equipment, Public Works is, is having more success than the Police Department in acquiring their vehicles. We're expecting the vehicles, the small dump truck and the pickup truck replacement early in fiscal year of '24 for the Public Works Department, and the Patty Bow and the basically boom lift that's on the capital, capital equipment program for next year is expected to come in in the next few months also. On the Police Department side, patrol vehicles are delayed still. So it looks like we're going to have to even carry over the vehicles that were supposed to be delivered this fiscal year. We're going to end up having to carry them into next year. So the lead time on those vehicles is just getting longer and longer. So moving on to charter and code review and update, we already touched on community village. And again, if anybody has questions throughout the month, feel free to email me or give me a call. Couple of things for the charter and code, we're probably going to pick up reviewing solar facilities again. We kind of dropped that when there was, there was some interest in it for a particular property in the city, and that interest has waned. But we have a couple of samples that we're going to get before the Planning Commission in the next, probably this month, and see if we can get some input there to start things out for solar. Also, we've had a couple of small changes that we've discussed regarding the dwellings in downtown Business District. Currently, the way the code is structured, there's no minimum lot size or anything for lots in the downtown Business District. But if you look under the special exception in the code, it refers to dwellings in downtown as having to meet the yard requirements for the R-6,000 district. And that can be prohibitive for some of the smaller properties that are in the downtown area that don't meet that 6,000 square foot minimum. And it also makes, putting a dwelling on the second floor of a building that might be the best use for an older building, makes it more difficult because then a variance would have to be acquired through the Board of Appeals. So as we've started our sustainable communities renewal, one of the to-dos in our community, sustainable community plan was to reduce regulation for infill development in, within the sustainable community area, and that includes the downtown Business District. So we thought that might be something we could consider, and since we're starting our renewal process, that might be something we could kind of check off that we've accomplished from the current plan. Not a huge amendment as far as the text goes, but it, you know, it does open the door to some additional dwellings in the downtown area, or makes it a little bit easier for them. And again, in downtown, the only dwelling that's permitted by right is a single-family dwelling. So it could be the upstairs of a carriage house, it could be on an undeveloped lot, something like that, as long as there's not another dwelling in the same structure. So it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, a, a house. It could be part of a building, it could be the second floor of a shop, and it would still be considered a single-family dwelling as long as there was just one dwelling in the building. Let's see. We've also had some conversations about updating the parking regulations pertaining to trailers right now. Some trailers can sit 24 hours, campers, I believe it is, others can only sit for an hour. And in talking with the Police Department some time back, we thought that making it all 24 hours, making it uniform would make things a little bit clearer for those vehicle owners. So that one's been kind of sitting on the back burner for quite a while, but now the community village hopefully is, is wrapping up. We can kind of work on some of those other code revisions we've contemplated for a while. Let's see. Moving on to Robertson Road and Broad Street. On Broad Street, there is an unknown water, a water main, a secondary water main was discovered that runs from Cortland up to one Broad Street. Kind of tees off the main, well, comes out of Cortland, runs up the hill, and angles back into the main, and the contractor hit it, not knowing it was there, of course. Nobody knew it was there. So we're working through that, and that has required us to kind of take a little bit of a hopscotch approach and, and jump up the street a little bit farther while we worked on plans on how we're going to address that water line and make some changes there. So we think we've got that ironed out now, but, and that line will be, I'm hoping it will be removed rather than being abandoned in place because it's relatively close to where the, the new water service is supposed to be.
Is that line transite like the one we found at the top of the hill?
No, I think that one was, was ironed.
Yeah, Mark, that, the newly discovered water main, did it run parallel with the other water main?
Yes.
And both of them were functional?
Yes. And, and it was also discovered, it, we did realize in Cortland that there was a second water main where we thought there was only one. Some of you may recall that there used to be a water line that ran behind properties that front East Baltimore Street, east of Broad Street. All of those homes have since connected to the water main in Baltimore Street on the east side of Broad Street, but there's still a water main in Cortland Avenue in the street itself. And we, we, we decommissioned the line that used to go behind the houses facing Baltimore Street, and then basically just, you know, abandoned it in place and capped it at Cortland and Broad. But when we did that, we discovered there was a secondary water main in Broad, a smaller one, but we didn't really know where it went. And now we do. It turned up the hill and went up to one Broad Street.
Is that the one that goes to the dam?
And then it turns and ties, and then it turns and ties back into the water main that's in Broad Street. So that kind of explains why, when we've had leaks, we've never really been able to shut the water off, because we didn't know this other water line teed back in, so it was always pushing more water in. Whenever we would have a leak on Broad Street, we could never get it completely turned off. So, so we'll be taking care of that going forward, and as I said, I'm hoping that we can actually remove that old line so that we don't have locate issues years down the road with it being in such close proximity to the new line. We don't want to, you know, I mean, sooner or later we'll have...
Are these things being tracked on Delauter's Asbills? Are they, is Delauter tracking this on their Asbill?
Yes.
And whatever that's being removed is being, shown as being removed?
Yes, and CDM Smith is, is tracking all the revisions as well.
Okay.
Yep. So, so again, Robertson Road, Broad Street, certainly we are behind schedule because of all the rock the contractor has encountered. And we think that, we hope that once the sewer rehabilitation work on Fairground Avenue is finished, they'll be pulling a crew from there and putting it, putting them over on Broad Street, so hopefully the pace will really pick up. And we've also modified the plans because of the rock issue, so that the new water lines going in are going to be shallower than the plan originally called for, so hopefully the contractor will be able to kind of make up for lost time. And everybody, the Public Works and the engineers are, are comfortable with the, with the reduced depth of the water line, so hopefully that will help us kind of catch up for lost time that they've encountered on Broad Street. So, yeah, so every day bring something, something new and exciting out there. But, let's see. And not on my written report, but I did mention sustainable communities renewal. So we're within the one-year window of our expiration of our sustainable, sustainable communities designation. That's a program through Department of Housing and Community Development that enables us, it makes us eligible for more grant funding than we would be without that designation. So the sustainable community area is essentially the historic district, the old, you know, pre-World War II portion of the city, plus Tawney Village in Cloverberry and Fairground Village, so the townhome communities, and then basically the main street area and the downtown. So as part of the renewal, we need to sort of tell the state what we've accomplished from our last, last period as far as our, our plan for things. So we talk about things like, you know, improving pedestrian connectivity and, and safety, encouraging development in the area and things like that. So we think that this time around, we're going to have more successes to report than we did the, with the prior renewal. So kind of looking forward to that.
Are those grants that would come, that come with that, are they tied to those specific areas? And are they, are there, are they tied to things that make things like, like more clean and green?
They can be. The state likes to layer as many programs on the same area as they can. So for example, when we've, we've been applying for the Robertson Road project for many years, and we've, we've applied for grant funding or low-interest loan funding through MDE. One year, we got, we ranked high enough to get financing for the sewer. One year, we got high enough, we got financing for the water. I don't know if we ever got financing for the storm drain, but we needed to get all three to really help anything. And ultimately, because all we got was qual, you know, basically we qualified to take a loan, we ended up saving money in the meantime so that we were going to do it just out of pocket. But before the last round of, of that application, we extended, when we renewed our community, sustainable community area, we extended it to include Robertson Road, thinking that, okay, well, now that's one more box that they can check off, you know, because now it's also in a sustainable community, thinking it would rank higher. But every year, there's a whole new, you know, pool of projects that apply, and, you know, it turned out that we still didn't rank high enough to, to get any grant funding on it. But we will be renewing that sustainable communities plan, so that's going to be before you in the next, it's going to be a few months, but we have some time. And I did want to just let you know that work is going to be starting throughout the city. Antietam Broadband is working to develop a fiber network for residential, for homes in the city. They're working with the Public Works Department, and our IT specialist has been involved also just to make sure that we don't have conflicts with any of our existing utilities. But that's going to be, you know, they're eager to get started. We don't have a specific utility permitting process. We typically go by Miss Utility Tickets to track everything. That way we know who's in town, who's digging, and where. So if we do have an issue, we know who, who to go to. But this is a very extensive project that's going to be throughout the city, and there's, a lot of it is going to be directional boring, so there are potential conflicts with our utility. So thus far, Antietam Broadband's been very, very willing to work with our Public Works Department to coordinate everything, and we're asking them to, to do test pitting anywhere near our infrastructure, and also to give us plans in, in small bites for where they're going to be working in the next week or two, so that we can, you know, closely review everything, you know, a week or two at a time, rather than a full 73-page citywide supplemental. And so, so far, I understand they've been very good to work with, but that is going to be coming our way in the next, next month or so for that work to start. So we will email you some more details on that. It's not really a city project, but just wanted you to be aware because, you know, people may call or ask, you know, what's going on with all the boring that's going on. So, so it sounds like we're going to have an option to go other, other than DSL or Comcast. So we'll get you some details on that. And I think that's about it for me unless anybody has questions, so.
On the wastewater treatment plant report, I see that things are looking up there since the E&amp;R upgrade was completed. Does that help with our situation with the fines?
We're still waiting for MDE to get back to us with some meeting dates. From the last time that we talked about this, when we sent our, our letter out to them. Yes, the fact that we are, are trending in the right direction, and the last couple of months, we've had the best numbers we've had since the E&amp;R upgrade was completed, certainly works in our favor. It, it remains to be seen if it's going to equate to any dollars, you know, reduced for the settlement offer. But, you know, the more, the more good months we have behind us before we meet with them, I think it puts us in a little better light to have those conversations.
Well, let's pray for some continued good months.
Yep, and, you know, we've been, as I said last month, we've been very pleased with the initial indicators from our sewer rehabilitation projects that are in the ground now. They're having significant impacts on the flow reduction, and that's really our best, you know, our best option towards compliance is reducing that INI. Without reducing that INI, we're, we're very unlikely to meet permit. So again, you know, sending all that ARPA money towards the utilities really is paying off.
Would this make some good ammunition to, to sit down with them and say, instead of the fine, we can take that money that you proposed to fine us and put it back in the fund for continued upgrades?
That's essentially what we pleaded in our, in our last correspondence, and I should probably get a couple of you, sort of a...
Yeah, that predates me.
A summary of some of that, because not everybody was on board throughout this. We've been holding, once or twice a year, we've had the city engineer come down, and the city attorney, city engineer, Director Smeeke of Public Works, and myself have been kind of focused on this compliance issue and, and our MDE penalties for the last couple of years, and we've been presenting to council once a year, every six months or so. It's, it's varied, you know, and, and kind of laid out our, our plan to work towards compliance. And it's, you know, they're, they're pretty long-range steps that we need to take to reach compliance. But for the, the couple of you that haven't been around for, for all of that, I'll, I'll put together a package of all the correspondence so that you can, some night when you're bored, you can take a look at it all and kind of get up to speed on that.
Yeah, I'm looking at these graphs, the trend lines look good, and I'm assuming that a very dry May will help that trend line even further.
Yes.
So, you know, some good news.
And, yeah, on, speaking of dry May, we are approaching a drought situation here in Carroll County. We're a couple inches below average for rainfall, so we've reached out to homeowners association and Meads Crossing to ask people to not water their lawns. As, as most, as you know, we have been under a voluntary water ban for quite a while since we saw some drops at well 17. But if either, and, and our wells are pumping more hours out of the day, we think, because we haven't identified any leaks, so it seems to be attributable to some pretty heavy-duty lawn watering. So we're going to try to see if we can rein that in and get our pumping numbers back down, but we may be getting to a point where we need to make it a mandatory, you know, phase one of mandatory restrictions so that we can then send letters out to people and, and potentially even fine people if, if they don't comply.
Yeah, I recall last year that there was some discussion, and, and there was a voluntary restriction, not really restriction when it's voluntary, but, but I hadn't seen anything out in the public about that lately, and I didn't know if we were, if we had a campaign that we were going to pick back up again now that it's been dry for the last month.
We probably will do that. And also, we want to, we may, we may have to make a mandatory water, stuff things up to mandatory restrictions when, when we drain the stand pipe to, to rehabilitate the stand pipe, because that's a much, much larger capacity, that's going to have a much bigger impact on our fire flow capacity and, and reserve capacity while that tank is, while that one's being rehabilitated. So that's, that's where the bulk of our storage is. So while that's, while that work is going on, we are going to have to rank it up to a, a mandatory water, water restrictions.
How long will that take?
I would estimate a month for the interior stuff. I don't know if they're going to have to have the tank drained to do the exterior on this one, but it, even though it's bigger, it should be more simple because they don't have to rig the underside of it like they do the elevated water tank. So this one's just... So this one's just basically a cylinder to paint. Um, so it's a little more straightforward is actually the actual paint job.
And just a, a quick question about this, this chart here. Um, cause I see, you know, each month and, and the depth, is this the depth that we're pumping from?
That's the, so the little triangles.
A little triangle, assume is the bottom of the well.
That's where the pump is located.
Oh, okay.
So, um, so like, um, well, number eight, the pump is at 340 feet and the water level is at 250 feet.
Okay.
Then you jump like all the way over to well 17, the water level is at, let's see, what about 160, 165 feet? And that's our super well that the pump is at 735 feet.
Right.
So there's a huge water bearing zone there. Um, that's the one that we hope to increase our, uh, allocation permit when we can get recharged to associate with it.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wanted to understand, so I'd understood what that graph was telling me.
Right, so the space between the pump and the-
Right, now I understand. I got you.
Are there any other questions regarding departmental reports?
I do have one more question regarding, uh, the planning and zoning, and this has been since the last, um, meeting. Um, I know there were some issues with one of the homeowners at, adjacent to Ballinger Park. Have we resolved the property line issue with that homeowner?
We have. They were able to-
Believe us now?
They, they were able to get a, um, basically a deed composite from their own, uh, survey firm that, that did support CLSI's work for us. So it turned out that yes, the CLSI did stake it out accurately, um, you know, obviously to the homeowner's disappointment.
Yes.
But we have, we have subsequently met with them and, um, there is some, some encroachment of things on city property, uh, some of which was there when they bought the house. And so we're working with the city attorney right now on, um, basically a, a use agreement that will let them continue to use the sheds that are on city property and, um, a swimming pool that has, has some years left in it, but it's, it's an older pool. But we thought that, you know, as long as we can work out an agreement with them, it's not next to any part of the park that we anticipate a lot of use. I mean, we, we hope people will stick pretty much to the trails and the ramble trails. Um, and this is pretty far removed from those things. But just to, we just need to protect the city with it. So we're working with the city attorney on, on an agreement with the property owner. So I think they're pleased that we're, you know, willing to let them, you know, keep their pool where it is and, and still have use of the sheds. But, um, there's a lot of other items that they will need to clean up.
Yeah, I-
But, but they, they were, you know, once, once they got the deed composite from their person that they trusted, um, you know, it, it certainly changed the, the dynamic there.
Changed the tune a little bit.
Yes.
But if they do have, um, uh, structures encroaching, um, you know, we can work with them for now, but if we get to a point where they want to sell that property, they are going to have to remove those structures.
Absolutely.
And they understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, and as I said, we'll be, that, that agreement will probably be before you next month.
Any further departmental questions? Hearing none, we've moved on to the legal report. Jay, are you with us?
I, I am, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I have several things for you tonight. Um, I'm going to backtrack to some of the city manager's, uh, report and go over some details. First of all, the community village ordinance. Uh, while he talked about it and you guys talked about it very briefly, I want you to know how much effort and involvement it took for Jim to do this. It is not a simple thing, uh, to reach the results because he kind of, you know, brushed over, these are the, the results. But to get to the results, it took a lot of, uh, effort to make sure they're going to work. And that's one of the cautions I'll give you is, don't think that you can just tinker with something at your next meeting and say, well, let's add this. Because adding it here has to be cross-referenced and made sure it works everywhere else. So, uh, Jim can tell you, and he never does, but he can tell you the amount of hours that went to make sure that this will fly. So, uh, be cognizant of that as we move forward. If you have any questions, it's always easier to deal with it before we get to the meeting. So, anyway, so that deals with community village. I'll follow up with what you just were talking about with Ballinger Park. We're working out the details, what it will be. I know you're always curious about the details. It'll be a license agreement, okay? We'll basically be giving the, uh, the property owner a license to use the city property. We'll, uh, we'll basically, uh, talk about where it is and describe the current conditions. Obviously our concerns are, we play the long game, so we want to make sure this eventually goes away. And we always are concerned about public liability where somebody says, hey, something happened in the pool and it's really on city property. So we can, we can work our ways around that. We'll have an agreement for you next month and, uh, I don't think it'll be an issue and I think it'll really go to resolve the problem. Couple other things. We have updates on the PFAS, PFOS lawsuit. If you followed this, if you didn't follow this, you'll need to talk to me to get the whole background. But PFOS is a class action lawsuit, the city joined because of polyfluoralkylines substances that are detected in the water. And this is all over the state and all over the country. So we joined this lawsuit against the big manufacturers. The update that you have is, uh, one of the smaller or relatively smaller manufacturers reached a settlement with the plaintiff's attorney, uh, to create a fund. And this settlement has to go through court and everything like that. But that was a positive development, uh, that they would come through and say, yeah, we want to settle. The biggest manufacturer is, uh, 3M. You've heard of them, that they're a multi-billion dollar company. And, uh, their case was set to go to trial this week. But because of the settlement with the other defendants, uh, the judge granted them an extension, 21 days, with the hopes that they would maybe reach a settlement agreement as well. All of that is great news for us because it is showing that the cards are starting to fall. And, uh, remember we stand to gain if there is a recovery. And it looks like there will be some type of recovery. No clue on how or how much, but it's not as speculative as we once thought where we said, well, we'll file this lawsuit with everyone else and see what happens. It's starting to line up. And I know that'll help, um, because we have lots of expenses relating to water quality. So I will keep you updated on that one. Uh, the next thing is on your item of new business. I'll talk about it now, so I don't have to talk about it later. Uh, item number four is a memorandum of understanding with the Carroll County State's Attorney's Office. So without putting you through criminal law 101, uh, I'll give you the overview. When there is a person charged with a crime, the prosecution, and that means the police through the prosecution, are required to give, uh, the defense any exculpatory information that they have. Okay? So you get the, what the means of that. But part of the exculpatory information, and it's called a Brady disclosure, part of that might be prior misconduct of officers. Uh, you know, did they do something wrong in prior cases and things like that? And you're obligated to give that up. There was never any formal mechanism to make sure this happens. Obviously the prosecutors have done it in every case, but when the new state's attorney came in, he said, there's no one contact person that I can deal with at the police department that will make sure I'm updated on what happens when you have these Brady disclosures. And in Maryland, they're called Giglio disclosures as well, so you might hear both terms. Bottom line with what I just told you is, this memorandum is being signed by all this municipalities. Everyone has their own. And it basically outlines how we would do these Brady disclosures with the state's attorney's office. So it's all been approved by the state's attorney's office. It was their idea. And so, uh, you can talk about it when you get to new business, but on Monday night, I'm hoping you'll adopt it. And then my last item of business, um, is something that maybe I want to get back to. I think it might be helpful, at least in this transition. I know we've had a lot of discussions about information and the sharing of information. And in years past, I used to create a bullet point, uh, legal report that I put out, uh, in the package. And we got away from that because sometimes the things that I want to tell you and put in that package are attorney-client privilege and it ends up in the public domain because there's a link on the website to the package, which requires, uh, Claire and staff to pull things out and yada, yada, yada. So we got away from that and I think that I, we should get back to that, at least in the next coming months, maybe the next three or four months. And what I will do is I will email this to you directly. It will be off-cycle with your agenda package, meaning that we are not intending to talk about all my things at a public meeting. And I will have some type of marking where it says it's confidential or not, so you know whether you can ask questions about it or not at a public meeting. And of course, I'm always an email away if you do have questions about specific things. But I think it would be able to help all of us as a team start to get a base knowledge as we move forward. So you can see that coming forward. And that's all I have, unless there are questions.
Any questions for the legal? Hearing none, it sounds like you're good to go.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jay.
Next, we're, business is the new business. First up, we have the monthly financial report. Anybody on council have any comments, discussion, questions regarding that?
I have a question on, I, I just can't, again, this is, you know, pardon my load of questioning, but I, it's my first, uh, full meeting on council here, so I'm just trying to understand a few things. As I sit here and look at the, uh, the statement of revenue and expenditures, uh, kind of the summary statement, um, where we have a, a current fiscal year actual, uh, in, uh, and then a total budget revised and, uh, somehow it, we're like at 48% of the expenditures, but I know our fiscal year ends the end of this month. Help me to understand that.
Uh, we probably have capital that we're going to end up rolling into the next year. Uh, so we've sort of, uh, front-loaded on the revenue for things that we plan to use fund balance for and things like that. So, uh, but this, this also lags a month, so we will have, you know, another, um-
Okay, I was just trying to, to, and I know that there's been some, especially with Roberts Mill being slow to ramp up in terms of, of how much of that money you're spending.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I can, I can, um, talk with the treasurer and see if there are any, um, any non-capital things that are particularly out of-
I just wanted to make sure I was reading the report correctly.
Right, but typically, right, you want to see that, that, you know, we're about, you know, percentage remaining is about, you know, 50% mid-year and, you know, that we would expect to be more like, you know, 80 or 90%.
At 50% at the end of the year kind of throws me a little.
Right.
But again, you know, knowing that that's a, Roberts Mill is a large expenditure, so.
So, yeah, and I see the, um, well, yeah, I guess page, is that page three that you're looking at, I think?
Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll sit down with the treasurer and we'll give it a once-over and see if there's any-
Right, I'm not, I'm not saying anything wrong. I just wanted to understand, make sure I was reading it correctly, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the monthly financial report? Hearing none, going into accounts payable. Do we have any further questions on that from council? Nothing, going forward to the acting police chief duties. Further discussion on that? Last we left it off, I think we deferred it towards this meeting if I remember correctly. So without, currently the acting chief would have to come to council for, I think, promotions, what else? Promotions policy.
I think anything beyond the day-to-day and, you know, filling the ranks with, with, you know, for patrol officers. I think, um, outside of the day-to-day, the basic direction was, you know, just, just keep the ship headed the way it is, you know, no, no policy changes, no promotions, um, that that was supposed to wait for the permanent chief.
But now that we're several months past where we thought we would have a permanent chief and having to restart the process.
We're still talking a couple of months.
You know, we're still looking at a number of months out. I think we need to, uh, our ability to let that ride has kind of disappeared. I think we need to give the, uh, give the acting chief the authority to do what he needs to do.
He has the authority. He just has to tell the rest of us so we don't have the same crap show we had previously. And, I mean, there's no problem with, if there's something that has, there's an issue to reach out and just say, this is going on and can we do this? And then everybody says, does that sound like a good idea? And then we say, yes. And then they do it. Or if it's a bad idea, we say no.
I guess my question would be, but why? So in the ordinance, for instance, the chief is designated as the manager of the police department. Does council want to be manager of police department? I mean, we'll stop the police chief search and maybe council can be designated police chief, but-
He's acting, he's not the chief.
The key word is acting here. That's the, that's, that's the, the thing that defines the duties of that individual.
What are my six months acting?
In the absence of a full chief, we have the responsibility to oversee that, those actions.
Do we have a list of personnel or outstanding issues that he needs to move on? Do we know?
We have a couple of promotion vacancies that have been sitting for a little bit.
But they haven't come to council, so we don't know that.
So the original, from my understanding, talking with the acting police chief, is that when Brad originally came over to, there to deliver him the news, he was told, hey, you know, don't, you know, just keep this ship going, don't promote anybody. There was never relayed the communication that you need to come to council for. But even then, I'm, I don't, what, do you, do you guys know a lot about policing? Are you guys, is anybody up here a prior police officer?
Would we be making personnel decisions for the police department? I'm not sure that that's our, I, I don't know if, if that's where we should be involved.
But without getting into past details that are not, I think, should not be brought up, we can do one of two things. We can assign somebody else to be the police chief and, you know, do something different. We can call in, you know, somebody else to maybe help out that has more experience. But I for one, am not ready to just lay everything out like that. I, I don't like some of the decisions that were made in the past. I don't like the way things were done, so.
Fair enough on that, I'm not, uh, not-
It's not, it's nothing personal against anybody, it's the way it was done, was wrong.
We can't continue to like spin. You know what I mean? Like I feel like we have-
Same mistakes over and over.
Right.
During, during this interim period, I would think that our city managers stay particularly close to the acting chief to make sure that he understands so we understand any needs that are being overlooked, that, that he needs, that he's not been able to do. And then let us know about those so we can, can deal with them. But I, I don't think that, I think we'd put ourselves in jeopardy if we, if, if the acting chief had the, the powers of a full chief.
So let's go over what the powers that he doesn't have are again. So I could see what in jeopardy.
So how about if we develop, if, I'll work with, with the acting chief, see if he can come up with a list of things that he feels he is, um, you know, not able to accomplish because of the restrictions that were put on him. Um, you know, the one, the specific one that comes to mind is promotions because there are, there's a, um, a, basically a sergeant slot that's been open, uh, since the former chief was there. And I know that the intent was to develop a promotion process rather than just design, just naming somebody as had been done in past years. That there was, you know, going to be an interview panel and there was going to be, I believe, a written test applied and things like that. And that, that vacancy still exists. And it's been quite a while now. It's been since, um, Castellar was promoted to lieutenant. So that position has been open ever since. And if we promote from within, say one of the corporals is promoted sergeant, then that frees up a corporal position and gives some of the patrol officers who would be eligible an opportunity to advance. So, you know, it's something that, that's just one item. Um, that's the one that comes to mind specifically, but I can certainly work with the acting chief and come up with a list of things that, you know, he would, uh, that he thinks he could tackle if he was empowered to do so. And then we can run it by you guys, if that, if that's agreeable to folks.
Definitely a step in the right direction.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think I have any problem with that, uh, but I just, you know, it, he should have the ability to at least say, we need to do these things and I want to do this with these people. And if he, if, if council feels they really need to have, you know, I mean, I, I have no idea. He could give those recommendations to me and, you know, I might as well be talking to the chair. I have no idea, uh, about these people. So that's why I wonder why, why we want to put ourselves into that position.
Cause we pay them. We decide what they make. We decide, you know, I would assume that these people who are getting these, uh, different positions would then get the pay that goes with that, you know, position. So it's just- So it's just, it's oversight and it's just, he could have done this four months ago if that was an issue. He could have written it all down and said, here's what we want to do, and it would have already been done. They wanted schedules changed, but nobody would just give us something in writing. It's not that hard, that's, that's, that's just how it works.
I, I think, in light of our track record with police chiefs in Donnytown, we need to be overly cautious in how we approach the duties of the acting chief. We, and I'm not disparaging the major at all, I'm just saying that we, as, as the mayor and city council, need to be fully aware of everything that goes on before it goes on. And that, that's, you know, if, if, if the acting chief comes to us for something that needs to be done and is justifiable and reasonable, I think we could support it. But I, just to, to be informed that this was done without knowing about it, I've got a problem with. And, and, you know, maybe nothing will ever come up, but I'm just, I'm just saying that.
We know some things are gonna come up because they're already.
We need to proceed with extreme caution and make sure that the, the new person, who we call the chief of police for city of Donnytown, is the right person, that's all. And, and that, that question hasn't been decided yet. And in the meantime, we need to have, we need to be fully aware of, of the daily functions of the police department.
Council needs to be aware of the daily functions of the police department.
Because when they fail, it comes on us. We have to answer for it.
Exactly.
No, we don't want to be police officers, we don't want to do the job. We just need to make sure that everything is running smoothly and, and, and properly. And that we don't end up in any situations that we've had in the past that could have been prevented if we knew what was going on at the police department.
I mean, you guys were more involved in the recent police chief nomination and appointment. Not to say that it went bad, but I'm just wondering, why, why do you need that purview? I get that you want to know what's going on in the police department, but what, what is your, I guess prerogative for it? Like, you want to know who they're, who they want to promote, why? What, what are you going to do with that information?
Jay, do you have something to say, since I saw your camera come on?
Yeah, well, I'm just watching from afar and I think one element has been missed, and it's hard because we're looking at it in hindsight, but if you recall and put yourself in the situation, we had a police chief that resigned at, let's just say, seven twenty-five, and at seven thirty, we need somebody to run the department. And so obviously the council made the decision and the mayor made the decision that they could, right at that moment, because you didn't have time to wait, you needed somebody that was gonna run the department that very next minute. And so I don't think, I understand it's gone on for a long time, but I guess the question you have is, if it was made in an acting capacity with these kind of controls, what would be the difference in appointing a permanent chief? Let me say that a different way. If you give the chief complete control of the department in an acting capacity, why do you ever need to appoint a new chief? And so the process should be to expedite appointment of a new chief or elevate the acting chief to the chief, which the process hasn't been executed by this council, right? The last council tried to deal with it and it didn't cross the end line. And so I think that was the, there was no, I don't think any deep authority or deep, you know, specter in this. It was, who are we gonna get to run the department because the police chief just was asked to resign? And that's how it comes about. So, don't forget that when we talk about it, it's not a reflection on Major Mitchell. It's, it's more about what we're, what were you doing when that happened? So, maybe that helps.
To expedite it, I mean, I can bring you guys some names on Monday from the previous police chief interview process that went on. I can present to you some of the top names from that process so that we can get a police chief in here. Again, if it's such an urgency that we, that we need the police chief for, like, I just don't, why are we fighting on the promotion details of the police department? Is there a particular reason, is there?
I don't think anyone wants to fight it. The bottom line is, they haven't brought us, we don't know that they want to promote someone because no one's come to us and said, we want to promote this person and here's the steps they've been through to be promoted. Like, there's just, they haven't come to us, they're not here telling us that.
I think on, on that particular issue, that was something that my, my understanding was that was specific direction that was given was, don't do any promotions. That's why it hasn't come before you, other than the, I guess the concern is the mayor is expressing that, you know, that the acting chief is, is, is limited, I guess.
Yeah, but all it would have taken would be a, a little bit of initiative.
I was gonna say.
A little bit of initiative and it, it would have been not a problem.
Because he's acting. When we put him in place to act, we said, keep things running, period.
And that was with the hope that the process defined.
That the process, right, would have gone better and we have achieved. Like Jay says, if you're gonna give him the authority to promote and do this and do that, then you're making him chief. That's not what we want. We want to get someone in here.
And the councilwoman's following along what was said that night as well, is that if you're gonna bring a new CEO, we have never stopped the hiring of our, our patrolmen, right? We've had hiring of people all along like that. But if you're bringing in administrative staff that are gonna carry out the policies of your new CEO, your new chief, that you may want that chief to have some input because they're going to be carrying out his policy. And the sergeant's position was seen as critical, because we talked about that, saying, that's basically number three in the organization, is a sergeant's position. And so shouldn't the number one guy, when you hire him, have some input on who he wants his number three to be? So, yeah, it wasn't a perfect discussion, but it was one that was thought out at least at the time.
But that was at the time, six, eight months ago, and now we are looking at another however many months to go through the process again, you know, and we can't let that spot sit open. So, I, 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 maybe, maybe the first question is, are we going to do another full search? Do we act on names that we already have and perhaps add Major Mitchell to the list? What do we, what do we want to do there? Let's, I think that our first question we need to answer is that. You know, are we going to conduct a whole new search? Because that then dictates what we do in this shorter term.
With such a, with the acting police chief being the acting police chief so long, I just don't think we have the time to do one of the search.
Where's it written that he can't act for two years if we want him to?
I mean, you're right.
But not if that, if you're going to follow the logic of, you don't want to fill that spot while you're waiting for a new chief, then you can't let that spot sit for two years.
To, to talk about the other side of the coin, which is your search, we talked about this before. You know, this is entirely the authority of the mayor and, and he is working with you to say, how can we do it as a team? Because that's what we want to do, but the mayor could bring names forward, as he said, he could bring them on Monday, although we talked about how we'd like, you know, to talk about appointments a little bit longer than just the last minute. But it doesn't have to be people that were part of the last search. It could be anyone that, I mean, that, we have had mixed success in the past, but other towns have tremendous success where they say, the mayor says, this is who I want and these are the reasons why. And you go through a process. So, I think you could expedite it, I just think you'd have to be supportive and work as a team to do it.
If council doesn't want to restore acting chief powers, and the process needs to be expedited, now I'll bring names to them, and we'll go through that. However, the police department cannot sit stagnant while we lose officers, while we lose potential officers. It's not in the best interest of the city in my mind, but that's just me as mayor of Donnytown. But acting police chief duties, that's up to the council. If they won't wait on it, that's fine, we'll get names out to them.
We need to expedite the process. And as attorney said, that's your call, how you want to do it.
So what I'm hearing is the appetite isn't to not do another full search, is to work with what we, what we have and what we already know.
That's his choice.
Our opinion is a man.
I'm sorry, do you have any?
And this, our opinion does not really hold any relevance.
No.
It's completely up to him.
All right, well, that's, Mr. Mayor seems to have your instruction.
That's fine. Next up, we have the memorandum of understanding, Carroll County State's attorney. Jay already touched a bit on it, does anybody have any questions from council on it?
Uh, no.
Sounds good, we will head on to the next. We got public comment at council meetings. It's been suggested a couple of times that we open line by line for public comments so that people who are here for specific items can get out of here quicker than have to stay till the end of the agenda. Creates a little bit easier that I don't have to remember the whole thing that they wanted to say about a specific item. Do we have any comment, questions, concerns from council members on public comment at council meetings?
I mean, I would, I would like, and you and I have, have talked about this and I've mentioned this before, is I would like to, to have in this workshop session, the ability to comment on items as, as they are brought up. Do you, are you thinking that on the Monday meetings, on the Monday meetings that you want, before something actually goes to a vote, ask for public comment at that point?
For the workshop, I was looking line by line, but for meetings on Monday, I was looking before and after that way. I mean, it is a little bit more official Monday, if people can get a last word in. Just to hopefully, just to get that last word in for the citizens, if people can't make it Wednesdays.
The only thing with having it, with, with comment at the end, when you're taking, actually taking votes and conducting businesses, is that by the time they get to make a comment, the, the vote's already been conducted. So if you're going to allow it, you're gonna want to allow that before a vote.
I agree with that.
There, we, we did have public comments at council meeting at one time. And quite frankly, it seemed redundant because the work session is, is designed for public comment. That's the whole purpose of the work session. We used to not have work sessions, we just to go right into the, the council meeting and then everybody would discuss everything and would get out of here at eleven o'clock and we'd go home. So the purpose of the workshop itself was to entertain public comment. I have mixed feelings about that. I would, I would not mind a, a time at the end of the agenda that we could hear public comment. But if, you know, the idea is to hash out our differences during this workshop based on the input from the community and then we're able to make a decision on Monday night on the action that's required, so that's, I, I, I don't know that it's necessary is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't have all the history and I know.
It's worked well this way for many years and if you want to make, opening up the public comment during the, during the council sessions on Monday night, that's, you know, that's up to you if you want to do that, it's just that it's gonna be kind of redundant because the, the, most of the matters will be decided by them.
I agree. Leave it the way it is.
Well, the only reason I, that it, it comes to my mind to allow it at that point is that we get very little public participation anyway. And maybe this would invite a little bit more public participation. And if we don't get any public participation, it doesn't matter, you know what I mean? It, it, it won't, nothing changes, so.
Okay, you had a workshop meeting today on Wednesday. We've discussed these things at length, some of them. You have an opinion, you have a vote. So Monday, when somebody comes and says something, you're gonna change it?
And what's keeping somebody from watching this Wednesday meeting online and sending an email to the council?
I mean, yeah, they got, you know.
Fair enough, I'm not, I'm not.
And again, this goes back to any of those classes that you would take at the convention. They'll tell you, if you want to have a good, functional, productive meeting, there is a way to do it so that things go smoothly, so that, so that everything moves along well, so that, you know, you get out of your government what you put into it. If, if, if you can't come to a Wednesday meeting or make a phone call or send out an email.
Or watch it on TV.
Or do any of those things, I, I don't see what adding, you know, another.
One thing we have to remember, this is not New England and these are not town hall meetings. This is our town hall meeting, the, the workshop. That when we move into the council session, it's a formal meeting where action is taken, decisions are made. And to rethink everything the second time is counterproductive, in my opinion. And it, quite frankly, not many opinions are changed anyway regardless of what the comments would be.
So four days from an item being discussed on Wednesday, for people to get emails in for the Monday meeting, council feels that additional discussion from citizens being allowed is contrary, that they don't want to do it, that is fine. However, again, if you're, if we're not gonna get that discussion anyways, I don't see why it would matter. All it does is open the door for an additional day for citizens to make basic closing remarks to council. Probably know something could come up between Wednesday and Monday. And it does, it gives them a greater chance to participate in their government.
Everybody has that opportunity.
Right, but given our level of participation, I don't see how it will change anything.
Workshop.
You know what I mean, even if we, if we were to allow it line by line on, on a Monday, we get, we seem to get so little participation, how would that change anything? And if it would invite some participation, I think that that's probably a good thing. But, you know, I mean, you are correct, they have plenty of opportunity and unfortunately so few seem to avail themselves of it. I'm, I'm personally in favor of providing all the opportunity we can because part of the reason that we don't seem to get any participation is people think that their voice doesn't matter or that they can't be heard. And you sit here on a Monday night and there's no opportunity to say anything and things come up, things change between Wednesday and Monday and there's a vote and nobody says anything.
Very rarely do things change between.
It's, it's my opinion that people say that because they're lazy.
Well, I, I don't disagree, I, I do not disagree with that.
My voice is not heard. We just laid out four or five ways they can, you know, get this information. But that's lazy people.
So what I'm saying is, is at least by opening this up, we can say to those who say, oh, I had my voice in there, you have the opportunities. These opportunities are here for you, if you don't take them, we can't help you. You know, I.
Oh, does it set a greater example that you're trying to make that communication avenue? I mean, council wants more communication, why not give citizens an additional communication avenue?
That's all I'm thinking, I don't know that it'll make any difference, but maybe it will. You know, right now, we certainly don't get much participation from, from the residents. Here we are having our, our workshop meeting and, you know, there are three people here in the audience and, and none of them have said a word. Well, of course, we haven't gotten back to the.
They haven't had their.
Right, and, and which goes back to, I, I mean, I, I'm in favor of the line by line certainly for, for the workshop meeting. And I think that if you're going to allow comment on Mondays, on the Monday meeting, that you have to do that line by line because it doesn't do any, any good to get comment after a vote. good to get comment after a vote. So if we're going to allow comment on Monday, that needs to be line by line. And I think we ought to allow comment at this meeting on a line by line basis. Because I think it would intend to invite more comment, but, you know, you can also do what I do every month, or what I did every month sitting back there, is make notes and comes at a lectern with a list of notes. Now, it's a little bit harder to do. It's a little bit more intimidating because then you've got to speak for, and if you, you know, we really haven't been watching the clock a lot here on those sorts of things, but if you really wanted to clock watch on people, you know, they may not have enough time to get in all the things that they want to talk about.
Well, I think if we're going to do it line by line, we're going to have to clock watch. Otherwise-
Oh, I, I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that because I don't get-
We don't want to be here till midnight.
I was going to say, you want to stay here till midnight?
Yeah.
They'll comment on every piece of paper in this pack.
In theory, it doesn't extend it, though.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, it does.
Because you still have the public comment at the end, so even if you broke it line by line, is there any public comment? No public comment, go on to the next. In theory, I mean, you're adding a couple of seconds, but there isn't, unless you somehow, our public engagement has increased so much that this auditorium is full of people, you are not increasing the actual time that you're spending on the meeting besides a few seconds of, is there any public comment on this additional item? And then go on to the next. That's why I'm a little confused is the, there's no additional time being added on to the day for the most part unless we're counting minutes.
Well, then why don't we bring up Facebook while we're here too and read all the comments that people post on Facebook if we're going to talk about comments?
When you say line by line, public comment, are you talking about a back and forth exchange? Or just they get up and-
That's what they're going to expect.
Because that's what they're going to expect.
I wouldn't say-
You will be here till midnight.
Yeah. No, we're not, I don't think we need to get into debates with people.
There's still no debating going on. It's just giving the option to voice your opinion at the actual thing that you are here for, so you don't have to wait for us to go through eleven line items to get to that point. Some people don't want to be here the whole time the council is here. They're not getting paid to be here.
Okay, well, we've all given our opinion on that.
I mean, I don't see anything wrong. If you want to do it line by line on Wednesday nights, fine, but I don't think we need to add it on Monday. Personally. But, I don't know. I mean, if you want to be here, you get here.
I'll just throw in, throw in one thing for, for your thought for Monday. At the planning commission meetings, with each agenda item, the chairman typically opens, opens, after the presentation is made, the chairman typically asks if there are any questions from the commission members. And then after they have an opportunity to ask questions, he opens it up to the floor to ask questions if they have questions for the developer while the plan is still up on the board or whatever. And, and that seems to work fairly well, but that, that's a, that's a little different forum than this. And, and, right, that, that's a little bit more, you know, it's, you know, a different style meeting.
But the theory still applies, and I'm, I'm looking right now back at Ollie Glass. You, did you look like you had something you wanted to say, Ollie? Do you have something that you want to say on this? Please do.
You're going to come up?
Because I think this, demonstrate-
My comment is on the, the police chief, that, you know.
Right, so-
And that's how it happens.
Is, is, is that good? That I can do that? Because I was in the meetings to elect the first two. And actually, the first three. One quit because he didn't want to give his friends tickets. But we've got an acting police chief down there now that was a state policeman. He did, he isn't coming in cold turkey. And I think he would be a very good person to nominate as a police chief. He's got more experience, he's been to school on it. You know he has. You know he has. And there's no reason why you shouldn't give him the job. Why spend another thirty or forty thousand dollars of our tax money and then lose someone that's doing a job right now? And he's not just a new guy coming in like our first two. Our first two came in sorta cold turkey, did he not?
Well, I don't know about that. I mean, we, we-
Yeah, they did. I was in on it. I was in on the meetings over at Rotten Gun Club. So you're going to lose someone that is doing a good job and can do it, and he's been to school on the job.
I think he was a county police officer, not a state police officer.
He was state.
I think it was Queen Anne County, but-
He was in state.
We can talk, we can talk about it later.
Yeah. I just feel he, he made the right person without spending another thirty or forty thou- and you know you're going to do it. And you know you're going to take it.
We did not spend that kind of money.
We're going to have a lot of opportunity to talk about that.
We didn't spend that money. We didn't spend any money for the hiring process, so.
Got the capabilities, more so than the person too.
Thank you.
So, okay. And if, if I could just kind of finish that thought about the, the comments at meetings. So we, we are, we, we have arrived at our current format in response to issues that we've had in the past. I know some of you have been here long enough that, that, that we've, you know, that you've seen when we did allow, entertain comment on, on, you know, things item by item as we went through the agenda, we had a lot of grandstanding and a lot of people just basically, you know, coming, cycling back through the microphone and, and doing their best to try to get council to engage in a debate. So, you know, and, and much as we just almost saw a little snapshot of here. But just recognizing that we are where we are right now because of past incidents. And, you know, going back to that does, does involve some risk. So just, just a couple of things to think about. I mean, ultimately, it's obviously your decision, but, you know, we've, we're where we are now for some very solid reasons.
Presiding Officer, I can open it up to discussion after an item correct, if I wanted to.
I'll defer to, uh, council on that one.
As the presiding officer, what-
I think you need council with an OU, S E L.
Yes.
So the presiding officer, the mayor, it specifically states you can open it up for discussion, but what we're talking about is the meeting that you all are having among yourselves, where you open it up for discussion and things like that. The public, the reason that this is being discussed, when I talked to the mayor earlier, is that the charter states that the council comes up with its rules of operation in the charter. And back in the day, when the city manager was telling you, we change things around to save time, to make sure it's more efficient, this is how the council did it. We didn't go back and look through the minutes, I don't think, for a vote, but this is how the council came up with it. And one thought that you have to remember, because I know that councilwoman fully talked about the, the classes we teach, the length of the meeting, everyone jumps right to this situation where they say, well, we want people to have their say. We want people to have their say. And you certainly do want that. But the more an individual monopolizes the meeting, and that's what happened in the past, the more it takes away from the ability of the other people in the room to eventually have their say. Because if somebody talks for three minutes on five items, that's fifteen minutes for one person. And so if my item is the last item on your laundry list, I have to wait through all of this till I get my say. And that was the balance that you all came up with to stop the grandstanding and create more expedited comments. And one of the big things you said was, you realize it's not like it used to be in the past where you had to come to a council meeting to reach you all. You have a full-time staff, you all have emails, you can contact the city almost any time. And so we kind of said that when somebody comes to a town meeting, they really feel passionate about it, so you want them to talk, but at the time and place that's appropriate. So we certainly could try to hone this down to make it, uh, fair to everyone. But the pitfall is, as you just saw, it does become a back and forth, especially if it's about, like, what would you comment on? When you look at tonight's agenda, um, we have two items of public policy and the rest are all items of new business that we haven't even heard the, the, the discussion about. And when it came up to putting public comment at the end, the decision, I remember this thought was from Councilman Zambetti at the time saying, let's just pick, uh, item number seven, chicken husbandry. None of us really know what we're going to talk about there. So how does a person from the audience come up and add anything meaningful in just hearing from it right now? Wouldn't the meaningful comment happen at the end when they had an opportunity to see the discussion? And, uh, so that gives you some of the background. This is not the only way it's done around the state. There's plenty of other ways that we can figure something out to meet your needs.
I mean, I'm not trying to stay here till midnight, but I'm trying to, what can we do to engender more, um, trust and cooperation and participation from the population?
Is about. They have the classes, they teach you these things, and then you talk to other people who have the same scenarios and say, what works for you? And what doesn't work. And you're going to see that it is statewide. People only care when you piss them off. And that's when they show up. You know, people not, are not like you who sit here and listen to a whole meeting and have an opinion about everything. Because typically, people don't care about everything that's on the agenda. They're here for one thing.
Point taken.
And I might add that, um, what you're suggesting turns it into a town hall meeting. This is not a town hall.
You can have a town hall.
Exactly.
Have a town hall.
You know? This is a governing body here.
That's right.
For the workshop.
The, the reason it's structured the way it is, is because you can move along and, and accomplish business and get the necessary input to make decisions. To have a open dialogue, a back and forth, will only, uh, it won't accomplish anything, I'll put it that way.
I don't think there was supposed to be an open dialogue there, I think. Council members engaged.
That's what will turn into one.
If you engage, it turns into a back and forth. If you have a back and forth, there has to be two parties. That's fine. Council does not want additional public comment. We will continue with the public comment at the start of the workshop, at the end of the workshop, and if that's what council is looking at, I mean, is that what we're discussing?
That seems to be the consensus.
Let's head on to the next one. Juneteenth holiday discussion. This is a discussion for the holiday of Juneteenth for the city employees, if I am correct.
Questions just come up if the city wants to recognize the, the federal holiday.
As far as the more county and state does right now?
Yes.
The county and state do already, or?
Yes.
Okay. Are the, assume other municipalities have joined on that?
Some have. If, if you like, before Monday, I can pull the other towns and see if there's anybody else who doesn't.
Okay, I'm, yeah, I, we ought to be following the general lead on that, I would think.
Any additional comment? Down to chicken husbandry. So there was some comments on Facebook.
Like we've talked about that before.
We have, we've talked about chickens a lot.
Been there before.
The, you know, someone was asking about chickens. It was posted up that you can have some chickens. Is all of council in agreement that we should do chickens, and if so, it might be time to put the ordinance for the exception of chickens, or it might be time to have a stay of enforcement? But right now, there is no animal husbandry in Tawantown, as far as the more you're not permitted for.
That is correct. Several districts permit agriculture excluding animal husbandry.
Yeah, because we got a lot of fields.
Right, so, yeah, so there are, there are parcels that have been in the city for generations that are farmed, but crop farming.
The reason that we had the discussion and then kind of said, don't ask, don't tell, was because it was more of a, you're allowed to have six animals, if they are pets, of a certain type. And it was like, okay, if you have six chickens, don't have a rooster, and make sure your neighbors don't complain. Because as soon as you start doing chickens, then you've got, do you have to have a permit to have the chicken? Do you have to have, you know, somebody come out and inspect the chickens? Do you have to worry about cleanliness and how much space and, and the rules and regulations and who's going to be our chicken police? You know, how are we going to regulate all of these things, you know, about the chickens?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, because right now-
Works the late shift next door when the rooster crows.
Right now, we need a chicken police because right now, per ordinance, you cannot have chickens. So for me, the mayor, who is designated to enforce ordinance, I would have to enforce that people cannot have chickens.
So you're going to be the chicken police?
No, I don't want to be the, I don't want to be the chicken police.
If you want to be chicken police, then we can do it.
That's why I'm asking you guys, maybe-
So right now, it says no chickens.
Right. The current situation where we've had, um, we've had discussion previously and some council members, um, have said, well, what if they don't eat the eggs? What if it's their pets? What if they only have this many? And, and that leaves some ambiguity from the enforcement point of view. I dealt with it for years. You know, Daryl Hale, our current code enforcement officer, is dealing with it. The code says no animal husbandry. That's it.
This is just a cleanup-
And that's what we tell people if people call. But we know that there are chickens in the city. We have not gone out with the, you know, code enforcement truck and, you know, taken people's chickens away. And I don't know that we really want to do that, but that's what the ordinance really calls for.
I mean, we, right, we have an ordinance that says none.
I'm just saying, like, if we have an ordinance for chickens, then we're going to have to check up on every single one.
And if you, right.
We already have an ordinance that says none, that we're not enforcing.
And that's what I'm saying. But as soon as you make legislation, then you have to follow that part up. If, if, you know, right now, people can say-
That's a contradictory statement.
I realize that. And if somebody complains, then people will go and, and go after them. But as, as soon as you say, okay, here's our legislation for chickens, somebody has to police it. Somebody has to.
Technically, somebody has to police it now, it's just that we're not-
I'm not, yeah.
The, the, the thing is, is it supposed to be policed? That's why it is there, but we're not-
I bet you're missing the point.
I'm not missing the point.
You are missing the point. There's a rooster across the street like right now. I hear it throughout the day. There's a rooster. Has anybody called to complain about the rooster?
Not that I'm aware of.
Right. But we haven't gone out and killed the rooster, or gone into their yard and taken their chickens, because it's a pain in the butt.
And we, and we don't go in people's yards and take their third adult dog that they shouldn't have.
So, I'm just saying, the more legislation you make, the more you have to police that legislation. So we just have to be careful, and however we're going to do it.
Well, this, to me, is that more legislation is simply a modification of what we already have to say that, that we're going to allow what we have said we're going to allow.
Except for that when you start having people come in and say, well, my neighbor has dead chickens. So what do they do with the dead chickens? Or now the chickens are bringing coyotes into the town.
Those are, those are all still things that we have to deal with now. I, we're not changing anything. We're just codifying what we already said we're going to allow.
So how many pets are you allowed to have now? Pets? Like, what does it say?
We've adopted the county's animal control code, and that doesn't really, it, it does provide a limit on the number of adult dogs you can have.
Okay.
It says that you're supposed to have a license for every dog, but you can get five or six dog licenses for your household, even though the code says no more than three, unless you have a cattle license. Cats, I think, like, when you get to a certain number, it's considered a cattery, and there's like some permit or something for it.
But there's nothing-
But, but there's not, right, there's no, there's no definitive list of like, you know, what animals you can or can't have. And, um, we have tried to work with the Humane Society on some enforcement issues in the past and, um, you know, the, that organization seems to be a little more focused on the well-being of the animals than like enforcing the barking dog ordinance and stuff like that, which are county ordinances
Sure.
that, that they're tasked with enforcing. So, so animals really are, I mean, let's face it, we can't even get people to pick up after their dogs.
Right.
So-
Heard. Okay, so right now, it says we should have no chickens. Not that the chick-
It says no animal husbandry.
Yeah, right.
And see, and, and again, I feel like that's a little iffy too, because-
Yeah, define that.
I've seen it defined in two different places, where you have to actually have a rooster and fertilize the eggs in order for it to be chicken husbandry, or there has to be a specific amount before it becomes husbandry.
So the Cambridge Dictionary defines animal husbandry as the farming of animals to produce foods such as meat, eggs, and milk. That, that's a pretty, pretty clear-cut one.
Right.
So if council doesn't want ordinances enforced, that's fine. But, and again, it's not that, I could, I think, yeah, you should have chickens. But when a, when a council person goes on Facebook, goes like, hey, yeah, you can have chickens, the idea comes back, let's say somebody complains to town. We don't have much for enforcement for it. There's nothing that defines, I don't think, much of the enforcement for animal husbandry. But the problem is, is that it puts me in a pickle of, am I supposed to enforce the codes that are there, or am I not supposed to enforce the codes that are there? I mean, it's as simple as just fix it. Just fix it. That's all that is being asked, is to fix.
So what is the fix? So what is the fix?
To say, you want six chickens, however many chickens council wants, that's fine. But I just want it fixed so that we can actually.
Right. If zoning enforcement is saying, okay, you can have six chickens, but no roosters, well then let's codify that, so that when somebody gets chicken number seven, and somebody complains about it, they can do something about it. Because right now, we can't.
And that way, once, that way, once.
Yes, we can.
We technically, yeah, we could.
The charter says that there's no animal husbandry within the city limits. That's what the charter says.
Well, you know, but then, again, but then you.
How you define that is, is.
Yeah, we didn't.
Anybody's guess, I guess.
Can we just make definitions in ordinance?
You can, right, you can, you can create a definition, and this was suggested several years ago, that we create a definition of, you know, animal husbandry, or that we clarify something about small, you know, typically farm animals. And it just never gathered any momentum, because there was never really a complete consensus, because some people thought we shouldn't have chickens, some people were against it. So we just kind of, you know, dropped it. It's come up, you know, probably half a dozen times over the last 20 years, and, and we never make a decision on it. So the code still says no animal husbandry, but it does, from an enforcement standpoint, it does create a challenge, because, you know, you tell people that ask, no, you can't have them, and then they say, well.
This person has.
You know, so-and-so knows somebody that's got them, or I saw chickens when I drove by Roberts Mill Park.
Right.
And, and we can send, and I have sent, when I was the code enforcement officer, I did send letters to people saying they had to get rid of their chickens. Some people did, some people didn't, and we didn't elevate it to the council level and getting the city attorney involved to send, you know, the ratchet it up a notch letter out.
Can we do a stay of enforcement on chickens? I mean, that's, is that another route that we're able to do?
That, that is, so that would be an official way to make it easy for the code enforcement officer, that if somebody calls, you know, he could say, well, I can't do anything about that, there's a stay of enforcement. So we're not enforcing that ordinance right now. But that, that tends to be more, that's something that would be more temporary.
Six chickens, be done with it. Can't have any roosters, six chickens.
I feel like the great Oz coming from the curtain. What I would suggest you do is, you're not unique into this, okay? And what you're talking about and going around is everywhere, because nobody allows chickens. And then people had chickens, and people wanted to regulate the chickens, but they realized if it wasn't black and white, either no chickens or no rules at all, they had to do a little bit more than just regulate it. They had to come up with rules and things. So I would suggest that at your upcoming MML conference, which is in, what, two weeks or something like that?
Yeah.
Why don't you talk to your colleagues around there and see what they have done and the outcome? I recently did one, an ordinance, same problem they had. People had chickens, you weren't allowed to have chickens for the town of Poolsville, and they came up with where you can have them and the distances from other houses, and how they were going to enforce it, and the numbers, and all the things that you would have to do. I mean, I guess that's what, you know, I'm hearing the mayor say, is that if we're going to do it, then we should do it right, and if we're not going to do it, then just say we're not going to do it, and that's it. So it was quite a, out of all the issues that that town dealt with, that was the most controversial, and it lasted months and months and months, out of everything else. But you don't have to reinvent the wheel, and you certainly don't have to sit there tonight and figure it out. If you want to do something with chicken regulations, we can talk to other towns, give you examples, you can see what it is. Just realize that when you regulate, you're requiring more administrative work. They have permits, they have the whole nine yards. So, you know, my thought would be, get some more information so you know what you're up against, and then go from there.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with tabling this, so we have a little bit more discussion and information.
From the staff perspective, I'll just ask that maybe after, after MML, and everybody has a chance to talk to others down there, just provide some direction, maybe at the July meeting. And we, we've, I mean, this has been going on again, you know, off and on for years. We've gathered sample ordinances from other municipalities in past years. We've already done a lot of homework, it's just never moved forward. So all we really need is some direction. You know, if you want to allow it, we'll come up with what we think is going to be enforceable and, you know, doable from the administrative perspective, and we'll bring it back to you.
Yeah, I just hate.
Just looking for some direction.
I just hate people calling into City Hall and us telling them, no, you can't have chickens, when they know their neighbor two doors down has chickens.
Agreed.
We're again hearing that we don't enforce chickens, so the next question is, well, what does the town enforce? Can I do something?
Yeah, we just.
Is it what it's enforcing, or?
I just wanted to get some consistency in that, that's all.
That is, that's all I'm asking.
All right.
A acceptance of Meadow Brook section six. Any council comments, discussions, concerns?
There's a short little memo in your packet about this. Basically, the, for every, every development that happens, there's a public works agreement that specifies what the city will eventually accept. Meadow Brook section six was no exception to this, so they have finally done the point repairs that were identified by Public Works. The top coat for the blacktop is in, it's overwintered, everything's good to go, so we are at a point where Monday night, we can accept it. The developer has already provided the maintenance surety that goes along with the acceptance for two years. They'll provide a maintenance surety. That's already in hand, but once we vote to accept the infrastructure, we can release what's left of their construction surety, get that back to the developer, and I believe this will finally close out the Meadow Brook community.
Cool. Any questions, concerns, comments?
Nope.
We are heading into the Head Start lease renewal. This is a year-after-year renewal, right?
Correct. No, no changes, and Clara was, did get a response from Head Start that they do indeed want to renew.
Any questions, comments, concerns on that?
And.
That's an ongoing thing.
Real quick, for, yeah, for those who aren't familiar, we, basically, they pay the utilities and get more or less free use of the building out at Roberts Mill Park.
Okay. Sounds good. We are at approval of the fiscal year 2024 town-county agreement.
Okay. So this is an annual agreement with Carroll County. They basically make a grant available to the city to, to offset the services that we provide, that then the county doesn't have to, such as police services. So the overall grant is $558,612. And then there's also $4,757 from, a payment from the county in lieu of state road aid program. So those numbers are up, the first number's up about $57,000 from last year, the second one, the road number, is actually down about $81 from last year. Then when we move through, we also, so we have a couple stormwater retrofit projects that have been done within the city. The Roberts Mill Run and Sarah's Choice Stormwater Pond over by O'Brien Avenue was also the project that built the bridge. And then the Trevanian Terrace Stormwater Project that's behind the elementary school and the Street to Trevanian Terrace. Those are a couple examples of the NPDES memorandum of understanding, where we pay a percentage of these retrofit projects, and the county pays the bulk of it. So from that $558,000, we subtract $20,000 due to that memorandum of understanding that we executed with the county several years ago, and then we renewed it not too long ago. That basically, we're all on one, one stormwater permit with the county. And the last thing that comes out of that total is $43,749, and that's, as part of that agreement, we also pay for part of the salary for an NPDES compliance specialist at the county. And that number goes up a little bit every year to help offset, you know, the salary increases and benefit costs. So the net of all that is that we get $499,564, and that does agree with the estimate that the county provided when we were going through the budget. So no, it's right, it's to the penny to what we budgeted. And it ends up being about $51,000 higher than our agreement last year. So I think that's kind of the highlights of it. So that'll be on for, for approval Monday night.
Any comments, concerns, questions? Not hearing any. Going on to the next item, which is the approval of contract amendment, Eckers Lawn Service This is just an adding additional services.
Yeah, so there's, there's three, three additional areas of mowing. They're, they're in your packet there. The first one is a small area on Genevieve Drive that is actually part of Genevieve Drive and not the contiguous property. And there have been a number of issues there over the years.
Where is this? I'm not, I don't even.
It's a property at the corner of Fairground, Fairground Avenue and, and Genevieve, so it's, you know, across Genevieve Drive from Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay.
So the city actually owns, as part of Genevieve Drive, a pretty wide swath of that sideyard. And.
I didn't know where that was. Now, now, now that I know where it is, now I.
Okay. And so the property owner there has, has been, you know, basically has said, well, if it's not mine, then I really don't want to take care of it. So, you know, rather than, this is just the cleanest, easiest way for us to do it, it's going to cost us a little bit extra for our, you know, for weekly mowing, but it's going to keep it nice and be less of a headache for code enforcement. The next area is at the dog park at Roberts Mill, there's some extra trimming and stuff that has to be done out there, so that's going to add to our weekly mowing time and cost. And the last one is the Trevanian Terrace Stormwater Pond I just mentioned. So now that that is finished, and the grass has had a chance to be fully established, now that's going to go on the weekly mowing list. So that's, should stay, should be a nice, nice, clean pond. The slopes are very, very gentle, so it can be mowed with a regular lawn mower or a regular tractor, doesn't need any special equipment, and it's just turf grass, so we should be able to keep that really nice looking with, with regular mowing. So those are just adding to our, our previous mowing contract with Eckers.
Just a quick side question, just talking about the Genevieve property. Is there any reason we wouldn't deed that over back to that homeowner?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, just add. Maybe just history there, I don't know, but it's like, it seems like it would be something, but if that's.
So the, the property owner has.
Have that discussion somewhere else.
The property owner has expressed interest in it. That area has also been identified as an area where we need to add sidewalk. The sidewalk currently dead ends at the end of the library property, actually a couple feet shy of the library property, because no one wanted to risk encroaching on this particular property at the time when the library improvements were done. So if we keep it, we could potentially put a sidewalk there ourselves. There may be some drainage, there historically have been some drainage areas, issues rather, at the property and the side yard there. So, and there's, there's a slope away from the curb. It's not, it's not an easy one to build. It would take some grading of the yard and things like that, but if we were to deed that over to the property owner, I think it would make it less likely that we would ever build that sidewalk. So I think by hanging on to it, it gives us the opportunity to put that sidewalk in the future.
Was just asking the question.
Yeah.
So, and, and the property owner has expressed interest in, well, okay, well, how about if, you know, you go ahead and do the sidewalk and deed the rest to me, and that way I don't have to shovel the sidewalk? So nobody really likes to shovel their sidewalk. I do, but I'm weird.
I do.
So.
I'm with you.
Anyhow.
I do mine with the tractor, so.
So that's it for the mowing amendments.
Sounds good. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from council on that? That means we head to public comment pertaining to agenda items. Just need.
I mean, it's not on the agenda, but it's a concern that I have. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry. I just noticed some things here, so I don't miss out points. My name is Olajuwon Kazi, and I live at 57 Bristol Station Road, the Mid-Crossing Community with my husband and three kids. The reason I'm here today is to present a challenge that I've been faced with in the last couple of weeks. I am a professional family childcare provider, and I've been trained by the Maryland Family Network and the Office of Childcare to cater for eight children in my home, with my kids And to do this, I require a zoning permit from the city of Tawney Town, which I applied for. And there was, at no point was I told that, you know, I'll be prohibited from doing this, because it's part of the requirement from Office of Childcare to get the zoning permits for me to, you know, start work. And I applied to finish my basement, because my home came with unfinished basement. We already spent over $25,000 to finish this. And in March, I got a call from the zoning administrator that I wouldn't be able to do that, because the developers, before they built the community, chose to build a community village, and that means that businesses cannot run from the homes. This was very devastating for me, because this was money from our life savings to do this. And there was no, at no point was I told that, you know, I couldn't, I wouldn't have gone to do this. So, I mean, I'm just here to appeal to the council. There's, there's no childcare facility or program in my community, it's a new community. Some of my neighbors still have to drive 30 minutes out, 20 minutes out. And to me personally, I think it's stressful on these kids, you know, taking them to and fro every day, because we don't have enough childcare programs around. And family childcare is, I'm sure you, you guys know that, is different from daycare center. I have to just get up to eight kids. I have three already. I mean, two are school-aged kids, I have one, so I can only take seven or less in my home. And sometimes we have families who have more than this in their home, so I'm just appealing to see if there's something that the council can do to, you know, review this code or the ordinance and, you know, just make an adjustment. That's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
We did, I mean, that was part of the discussion we had a little while ago, and your, your case is noted. It's unfortunate that you're in this situation, and I do feel for you. But, you know, right now, we're, the code says what the code says, and I, we can't do anything with that right now.
Help me understand, that the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission was to approve this exception? It went to Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Board of Zoning Appeals turned it down?
No, no, this was, as we mentioned earlier, with community village, home occupation specials are not allowed in a community village. And so that's, in the, in the draft that's before you, we've deleted that text, so it would allow a home occupation, just like in any other district, so that it would still be the same process, where you would go to the Board of Appeals for a special exception use, which you were applying for, I understand. But because the dwelling was in a community village, community village prohibits it.
Oh, is that.
So, so that's, that's part of the ordinance that's before you would, would enable that.
Now, my understanding is that.
I just didn't understand why it was turned down.
Okay, yeah, right. My understanding is that your, your homeowner association handbook said it was allowed?
Yes.
You know.
That's why it went.
Is that, is that the case, and do we, has that been corrected?
So the, the HOA cannot restrict a family daycare, so they're not able to, and they provide the city with, with documentation saying, hey, look, you know, you can't, or we can't prohibit this.